Hey, everybody, please rise. Join me in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mission can't amelosa.
Everyone, please bow your heads. Join me in the Lord's prayer. You choose. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Our next public workshop will be Tuesday, October 3rd at 10:00 a.m. in this room. And the next regular meeting will be Wednesday, October 4th at 10:30 in this room. And then we do have a annexation hearing scheduled for next Thursday, 10:30 also in this room. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated September 20th, 2023, and accept and approve the video recording of the September 20th, 2023 Commissioner's Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Discussion. These are still not being done correctly. It's very specific according to the revised code. If you're going to be using the video meetings instead, then you need to make sure that everyone is saying their name before they speak. That hasn't happened. And, you know, you guys, not for nothing, you guys are in court over this. So can we please start doing them the right way?
I believe we have been doing the right way. We'll see what happens in court.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because they're done improperly now.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills.
Second that.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive the amended certificate of the county budget commission number nineteen dash twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to accept two change orders with iVideo associated with the audio video project for the Trumbull County Commissioners Hearing Room. Change order number one is to accept a cost reduction of $1,666 from the original quote of $69,679.31 to the final invoice of $68,012.31. Change order number two is to accept the cost of additional items for a total of $1,177.67. After both changes are implemented, a final cost savings for the project will be $488.33, making the final price of said proposal $67,523.98.
Who requested this change? Who requested the change or?
Do you want to know who requested the change? Tim, please approach the mic.
Tim Hanford, Trumbull County IT. I request the change because we would like to change this microphone to a wired mic. This way it'll be full proof. And we will also have this wireless mic to be able to use as well for individuals that cannot come to the podium.
Okay, that's what I, I wanted to make sure that you were going to keep that one as well.
Yes.
For accountability.
Yes.
And as you're talking to me, our voices are being picked up by the microphones and, and the recording is going to hear it, but your voice isn't being carried to the back of the room. And I think I.
Does, does anybody in the back of the room have issues hearing me from this mic? Right.
Okay. It's, it's the same distance that you are to that mic that I am.
Yeah, but you have a directional mic and that has a 360 mic.
What I was trying to ask is that if you could provide something that's a little more, that will carry.
We can add on.
It does actually work with the recording.
We can add on.
Yeah.
We can get additional quotes. We can present additional quotes to have your microphone replaced with something similar to this.
Or, I don't know if it would be that, but just making sure that the people on the back can hear, because I'm not going to, to scream or hold it up to my face every time I talk, you know? But it does work for the purposes of recording the meetings. It just doesn't carry. So it might be something different that we need.
It's the same no matter what. The people, people in the back, you're having just issues hearing out of that microphone. Is that correct?
Okay.
Correct. And there, there is a difference in the microphone. Now, we can quote you out something for yourself just to have a microphone similar to this.
Okay, well, I mean, I just.
Which will be an additional cost. It's not, it's your replace.
Never mind then, it's fine. They can sit in the front if they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item.
Wait, I'm sorry, they're going to coordinate that with, with maintenance whenever they come in to just to make, because I was reading it and it said that if they're not responsible for any holes or anything that they do. Hatching and things like that.
Who's not responsible for that?
The company.
The company will do all the wiring, yes.
But they're not responsible for repairing any holes or anything like that. So I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, well, we'll take care of maintenance. We, we have a pretty good relationship with Bill Hart. We'll, we'll be good with that, so. Okay, thank you.
Item number seven is to approve a wage increase of precinct election officials from $9.20 per hour to $9.55 per hour on Election Day. This increase is the most allowable by law. The wage increase will be effective beginning in election year 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Sir Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to award the final extension for the only bids that were awarded on September 15th, 2021, for the youth build of Trumbull Metropolitan Housing Authority and Jobs for Ohio graduates to provide youth services through the WI OA Comprehensive Case Management Program for the term beginning September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to table Agenda Item Nine because we have a policy in place that was adopted and a resolution in 2021 that we advertise for board appointments. And this just came over as a reappointment recommendation from the director and it doesn't expire until next year. So that we can advertise as our resolution says we should.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Item number nine is to request the reappointment of Mr. Donald Emerson to an additional seven-year term to the Warren Trumbull County Public Library Board of Trustees for the term beginning January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2030.
Motion approved.
Second.
Sir Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because the county didn't follow our own, the commissioners didn't follow our own guidelines, which requires us to advertise and it doesn't expire until the end of this year. We have plenty of time to do that, which is no. And the agenda item is written wrong too. I don't know if the clerk noticed that.
Item number 10 is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign and return the release and assignment form associated with Forest Hills Estates, plat number four, performance bond number 62717466. The Trumbull County Planning Commission sent a letter to CNA Surety in September of 2022 in coordination with the Trumbull County Engineers Office requesting payment from a performance bond issued in 2016. The estimated cost provided by the Trumbull County Engineer to complete the outstanding items of work needed to complete the roadway is $21,100. The county reserves the right to make a claim for the remainder of the bond in the amount of $2,900 if necessary.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number 11 is to approve a biennial revision to the Trumbull County's Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan. Trumbull County has expanded the services provided through the Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program effective October 1st, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 12 is to receive and place on file for record purposes the 2022 Annual Report for the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services as submitted by John Gargano Esquire, Director of Department of Job and Family Services.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 13 is to award the lowest.
My, my agenda is.
There was an email sent to us this morning to remove that item number. You must not have read it. She withdrew her consideration to be employed here.
She withdrew her.
Yes. She took a job elsewhere.
It didn't, it didn't say why, and that was my question. It just said that it was being.
It said in the email that she took a job elsewhere, except in another position with another company.
Okay.
Okay.
Item number 13 is to award the lowest in responsive and responsible bid for the TRU 2023 road program, programs submitted by the Shelley Company in the amount of $1,146,402.90. The TRU 2023 program consists of the resurfacing of Addison Road in Brookfield Township, Howland Wilson Road and Squires Lane in Howland Township and Jones Road in Liberty Township. At this time, partial authorization is requested in the amount of $585,730.60 to complete Howland Wilson Road.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 14 is to approve the Ohio Department of Transportation Job and Commerce Grant awarded to the Trumbull County for TRU Larchmont Bronze Overland Intersection Improvements Project located in Howland Township in an amount up to $150,000 and authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board, to execute said agreement and associated conflict of interest and ethics disclosure form.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to remove from table item number 16. I forget the meeting date of September 20th related to forming the Transportation Improvement District.
We're, we're on number 15, Commissioner. We haven't done that. Number 16 is Dominion East, Ohio.
Okay.
You're, you're, you're using the wrong agenda.
I made a motion to move something up. Do you understand what I just did?
Yes, but the number that you said and what you read with it didn't match up. You said number 16, the transportation thing is number 17.
So I make a motion.
That one right there, number 15 is where we're at.
To remove from table item number 16.
Dominion East, Ohio.
Pardon?
To remove from table to concur with Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permit to Dominion East, Ohio? That's number 16 on your sheet.
I think you're confused.
You just said to remove number 16, correct? Number 16.
To show you what you're looking at.
Yes.
Look here.
Right, that's number 17. You said remove item number 16, right there.
To remove from table item number 16 under the meeting.
That's last meeting, correct?
Exactly, something was tabled, Denny, and I'm asking to remove it from table. Do you follow?
Right, but you're skipping other items. So are you going to ask you to move it up first?
I just want.
I mean, you could see them, I mean.
All right, so you want to move this, remove this from table? We haven't got to that yet. We've got two more agenda items before we get to that.
I just made a motion.
And you're, you're, you're saying you're skipping the other agenda items?
Person is able to make a, a motion from the floor and I am making a motion to do that because it was not added in the order which it was to be added by the clerk.
That's not true.
Okay.
Why don't we just do 15 and 16?
Dies for lack of a second. Item number 15, please.
Item number 15 is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed.
You have to read the company.
J-Roe Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 16 is to concur with the County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permit requested by the company listed, and that's Dominion East, Ohio.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number 17 is to remove from table item 16 under the meeting date of September 20th, 2023, Journal Volume 157, Pages 25981-25982. And that's to adopt a resolution creating the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District pursuant to Chapter 5540 of the Ohio Revised Code establishing the structure of the Board of Trustees of the same, appointing two members of the Board of Trustees, ORC 5540.02 CIA, and establishing the territorial jurisdiction of the same.
Motion to remove from table. Item number 16.
I'll second the motion to remove from table.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantilemisa.
Yes.
Okay, and item number 18 is to adopt a resolution creating the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District pursuant to Chapter 5540 of the Ohio Revised Code.
I, if you remove something from table, then it has to be placed on immediately thereafter.
It is.
It is.
It is.
Okay, wait a second.
I'll start over with that. Number 18 is to adopt a resolution creating the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District pursuant to Chapter 5540 of the Ohio Revised Code establishing the structure of the Board of Trustees of the same, appointing two members of the Board of Trustees, ORC 5540.02 CIA, and establishing the territorial jurisdiction of the same.
That's the 1A and motion to approve.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
So I'd like to make a motion to, I was, I'm making a, a motion to have a special meeting tomorrow at noon related to the Transportation Improvement District, which would include all of the people who participated in the planning related to bringing that to the Board of Commissioners. And alternately have it on Friday and, and to vote on it with their input and have it alternately on Friday if they can't make it tomorrow.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Item number 19, in the matter of creating the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District and determining the structure for and appointing members to the Board of Trustees of the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District. Whereas pursuant to Section 5540.02 of the Revised Code, a Board of County Commissioners may create a Transportation Improvement District, which shall be a body corporate and, and politic and shall exercise the powers conferred by Chapter 5540 of the Revised Code. And whereas the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners wishes to create a Transportation Improvement District for Trumbull County in order to facilitate transportation and related infrastructure improvements through a coordinated, cooperative, multi-jurisdictional approach and to realize the unique opportunities and benefits that a Transportation Improvement District provides for all jurisdictions with Trumbull County, within Trumbull County. And whereas upon creation of a Transportation Improvement District, the Board of County Commissioners shall by resolution determine the structure of the Board of Trustees of the Transportation Improvement District. It creates by adopting the structure contained either in Division C I or C1 or 2 of Section 5540.02 of the Revised Code and make any appointments required thereunder.
Make a motion to approve.
You have to keep reading it.
Keep, keep reading it. You go ahead and read it for clarity.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Trumbull County, State of Ohio, that Section 1, there is hereby created a Transportation Improvement District pursuant to Section 5540.02 of the Revised Code to be designated and known as Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District. Herein after referred to as TCTID. The TCTID shall be.
Determinous?
Determinous, thank you, with, with and include all of the territory within the boundaries of Trumbull County, Ohio. Section 2 is, it is hereby determined pursuant to Section 5540.02A of the Revised Code that the structure for the Board of Trustees of the TCTID shall be as contained in Section 5540.02C2 of the Revised Code and shall consist of five voting members appointed by the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and one non-voting member appointed by the Speaker of the House of Representatives, Jason Stevens of the Ohio General Assembly. Section 3, the Trumbull County Clerk of Commissioners in coordination and consultation with the members appointed herein is hereby directed to cause notice of the date, time, and place of the organizational meeting of the TCTID Board of Trustees to be given in accordance with Section 121.22 of the Revised Code. Section 4, the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken by it concerning or relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and that all deliberations of the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and any of its committees that resulted in those formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the applicable Ohio laws. Section 5, the Clerk of the Board of Commissioners is hereby directed to certify copies of this resolution to the Trumbull County Auditor, the Trumbull County Engineer, the Speaker of the House of Representatives, the Ohio Department of Transportation, and the members of TCTID Board of Trustees appointed herein. Section 6, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption.
Make a motion to approve.
I second that motion.
Discussion, who, who wrote this? Who changed, who wrote the original one that was on there yesterday? Appointing you and the auditor and who wrote this one? Because this is all, I, I want to know a bit more about how this came here. I already made a public records request. It's unfortunate that a commissioner has to do that in order to obtain information.
Well, you could have come to the meeting. It'd been a lot easier. You could have walked right in for free, sat there and got the information. Instead, you listened in there and then got on the phone and lobbied everybody you could because we didn't give you the right to grant political favors by handing out board positions to 13 people in an election year. We're not going to stand for that. This establishes the TID with a five-member board, which is done calmly across the whole state of Ohio. Mahoney County did it. I talked to all three commissioners. They said, don't go with a 13-member board. It would be a zoo. You'd never be able to get a quorum. If you want effectiveness, and which you said at the last meeting, we have to hurry up and do this because we're going to lose grant money. We can form this board today and be done with it, not have to go back to any other entity to appoint board members, not have to wait for their council meetings, their trustee meetings or anything else. This board does one simple thing. Get grant money through the TID and as long as we get the end goal, it doesn't matter if there's 50 people on the board or five. We have five worthy people we will put on there. I think we can do that and put five worthy people to get effectiveness, to get the $500,000 grant money for the TID. The, the areas where these TIDs are going to be affected will be, this board will be representative of those people. So whether it's in Howland, Brookfield, Niles, Warren, the board is going to work in their interest to get the money for that project. And that's what they do commonly statewide in more than 55 counties. There's, that use it with a five-member board. Last week, you came in, you wanted a 13-member board where you can hand out board seats all over the county to a whole bunch of different people. That is ineffective. And, and even the person that wrote the law, the legislation in Warren County, Ohio, he recommends you do the five-person board instead of the 13 for effectiveness. He said, if you want to act quickly and effectively, manage five people instead of 13. So that's the route that I choose to go. That's the route we discussed in open meeting yesterday. That's the route that I used, utilized when I got on the phone and asked other commissioners. And I talked to all three commissioners personally in Mahoney County, not just one. And all three of them said their TID works great. North Jackson, Austintown, they work together. They get the money. They haven't been rejected yet. And they said, don't even think of doing 13. It would be a madhouse, it would be a zoo. And if you're going to do that, all that is, is handing out political favors to people to grieve them in an election year that you put them on a board. And they said, don't go that route. As a new commissioner that is trying to be effective with the county and the most effective use of your taxpayer dollars and not play politics, this is the route that I choose to vote on. And that's why I voted the way that I did.
Okay, now I expect five.
Go ahead.
Five uninterrupted minutes as well.
Go ahead.
The, the people who came together were the ones who, everyone has touted their, their good work because they were the ones who worked with the Golden Triangle. They formed, decided how they wanted to do it in the least political fashion. They already identified projects. And it would be a slap in the face to those people who worked hard and recommended how to do this and to the cities and townships that would be represented. All of them have reached out. I know, I know that I was reached out to yesterday and, and the, the allegations that there is some type of political anything that favor that could be made by putting people on a board that's identified through statute that, through the Revised Code is, is absurd. We have the ability to do this the first. We have the ability to do this the first way where the engineer would be automatically included, where you would have representatives from the two largest cities. You'd have a representative from the largest township, which is Howland, someone from the Township Trustees Association. So that would, you, Mr. Township, of all people, should be saying, we need to have township representation there. So I'm not done talking.
I'll get my.
So, so the problem we, we have is just these. You've got, you've got both of you doing completely opposite of what was recommended by our area's premier planning team, which worked with the, the JED.
Who was that? Who's the area's premier planning team?
The, the, the Golden, the Golden Triangle group.
That's the premier planning team of the county?
Do you think that they're?
I thought the Planning Commission was. I didn't know.
So again, that's what it seems like. It seems an awful lot like the Planning Commission inserted themselves into something where they weren't at the table. You know, and I think that that's unacceptable as well, you know?
Planning Commission is the lead economic development agency of Trumbull County. Yes, they are. And we vote on that. And they do economic development for our county.
And they would still be able to have a seat the other way, but have, and the discussion, the discussion that happened yesterday about putting, you want to talk about doing what's right for the county. Your discussion included yourself, who didn't know what a TID or TIF was until a week ago, and an auditor who, who's just learning about bonds. Seriously? You need to make, we need to make sure that we actually have a team of people who are familiar with planning and we have representation from the largest cities, Warren, Niles and Howland, and then Howland Township so that they can, because they know what their needs are. They have been doing this far longer than the, the two of you and then including, including the sanitary engineer. I mean, seriously? We need to do things in a better way that's not political and, and us making five appointments as opposed to, the Board of Commissioners making five appointments as opposed to following the way the Revised Code says.
No, that's not true.
This is in the Revised Code.
Way the Revised Code says means that we would not have our hands in it. And to me, that is absolutely less political. I mean, it's obviously less political.
So, so having the Speaker of the Senate, the Speaker of the House, us appoint two people is less political?
How, how is appointing three, singling out three municipalities or three, two, one township and two municipalities less political? So you're not going to include Hubbard? You're not going to include Liberty? You're not going to include Gerard? Isn't that the definition of political? I mean, here we are trying to, trying to do the best for the county, for the county. And by the way, the city of Warren doesn't appreciate being a ploy in this. The truth of the matter is they, the truth of the matter is they said they, they support the Commissioners and they support the economic development of the entire county.
Did you end up talking to Mr. Keys about this?
I did, and he supports it.
Yep. And I talked to Mr. Lapola and he supports it now too.
So this is trying to stir the pot and cause dissension when it accomplishes the exact same thing? All these economic development agencies we want to put on here, you're saying the Planning Commission is political? You're saying Eastgate is political? Meanwhile, these, these organizations, these municipalities are represented in those organizations.
And, and you got to look at it this way. You said, you stirred up Howland and said they're not going to have representation. When you talked to Darlene St. George.
Administrator sits on the Planning Commission board.
On the Planning Commission board, they are a member of Eastgate and Randy Smith is a resident of Howland. So how is Howland's interest not taken care of? Three ways they're, they are overtaking care of compared to Brookfield, Champion, Bristol and the rest of the townships. This is something that you came up with last week. You tried to ram it down our throats one way.
Panel of people who wanted.
Are advocating.
And why were you on the phone all night last night calling everybody to lobby us? Businessmen, politicians to call me and Morrow to lobby us to change it to vote that back that way. And you promised them you were fighting for them. Why did you do that last?
And they were embarrassed to have the conversation with you, honestly. Because they know it's the purview of the Board of Commissioners to do what they need to do.
You, you need to just stop with your alligator. I mean, no.
How many people did you call yesterday, Commissioner Frenchco and lobby for them to call Morrow and I to change our vote?
Too many.
After you listened to the meeting at eleven-thirty, you started at eleven-fifty-three with your first phone call while we were still in our meeting.
And each of them that I talked to were fine with the Commissioner's decision.
Same with me.
That's not even true. I mean, you can't.
Well, you were on the conversations and you know.
I, I think it's unfortunate that, you know, one, one week you're saying, oh, it's beautiful to have the communities working together.
That's what.
And one week, one week you're saying, we have to do this right now. It's an emergency. We're going to lose funding. And now you're saying, take time and go let the boards appoint people.
Finarily selected, you know, they've already got people in mind, but the reality is you, you say things when it suits your narrative. So when you, when you were talking, when you, you know, when you were talking about Niles, Niles and Howland working together, like a big kumbaya moment coming together and working together. Why not allow these communities to have a seat at the table and have?
Well, they do have a seat at the table. They're members of Eastgate. They're members of the Planning Commission. They work with the county engineer. They all have seats at the table.
There will be a project identified in a certain city and if it's in Niles or if, if it's in Niles or if it's in Howland, the board is going to represent the interest of that entity, the whole board will. So if they're trying to get a turning lane in Howland, the five-member board is going to lobby and fight hard to get funds for Howland, whether they live there or not. TIDs are specific. Yep. TIDs are specific. This works everywhere else. Why wouldn't it work here?
Okay.
Okay, so item number nineteen, the vote, Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
I continue discussion because it wasn't complete. Advertising for this, is this, is this being advertised?
What? Is your way being advertised? This is, we are talking about the lead economic development agencies in the county. You want to advertise for somebody against Eastgate or the Planning Commission or the Highway Engineer?
We request intention. I mean, seriously, last week I caught you guys violating sunshine in here discussing how other communities.
What are you talking about?
On video and I got a copy of the video.
That we were talking?
Yes, I walked right in on you.
We were talking. Had a great conversation.
People talk to each other. I know that's hard to understand.
We're reading the same, the same motion and it says right in the motion that you, that everything leading up to the decision was made. Um, it's committee resulted from those formal actions that were meetings of open, open to the public and compliance with applicable Ohio laws, but you were, I walked into both of you guys in here last Wednesday, talking about how other communities do the TID and talking about Mahoning County and.
I was talking to gentlemen about the Furt Comp. I don't know what the hell you heard. You walked in, saw me and Morrow and said, you guys can't stop violating sunshine law. You had a, you had a walk by in the hallway in about a half a second glance and again, all of a sudden went accusatory on us.
I heard you talking about how Mahoning County does their TID.
That had nothing to do with that. We did not talk about that.
Just move on, please.
I'd, I'd, Mar, I'd like to go a second. I'd like to make a motion from the floor now.
Okay.
I got five board members in mind right now. Let's do this right now and get it done.
That's why I wanted to discuss. I mean, if we could do that today, that would wrap it up and that'd probably be best.
And we could, we could debate this, but I'd like to make a motion on the five-member Board of Commissioners Choices that we have Martha Yoder County Auditor.
Or Representative from the Auditor's.
Representative of the Auditor's Office. That we have Trumbull County President of the Board of Commissioners or his representative. We have James Keating or Eastgate or their representative.
James Kinnick. I'm sorry.
Kinnick.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
What did you guys talk about this before? You wrote it down wrong?
No, I said, he knows what I'm talking about when I say Eastgate. We have Trumbull County Planning Commission, Nick Coggins, or their designated representative. And we have County Engineer Randy Smith. Those are the five entities that I'd like to see represented on the board.
And if we think that's a political board, I don't know what to tell you because they represent all of Trumbull County.
Why would the auditor be on there?
Because they are in almost every other county that has a TID. They are in Mahoney County.
Because if there's assessments that need to be leveled or there's assessments that need to be on, on these big projects, she doesn't even know how to do a TIF. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, there are.
Maybe you should do her job for her. Or you slander somebody.
I mean, I could give her a research.
She's a duly elected official like yourself and you're saying you're above her.
Imagine if somebody spoke to you like that, Commissioner. Imagine if somebody spoke to you like that. Just imagine. And she's not here to defend herself.
Increment by TIF district in Warren that's not even represent, not even being assessed right now. It's not, it's, it's.
Okay.
I mean, we can ask, is that being addressed? The TIF in Trumbull County?
We are discussing.
Are you going rogue? You're going wild? You're going way off course here? Let's stick to agenda items.
The other matters before.
Can we address this matter first before we go off on a tangent?
How would we put? Okay. I need a second for Mr.
I'll, I'll second that. I'll second it.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No on that board.
And again, there will be one other person on the board that will be appointed by the Speaker of the House per the Revised Code. I believe that's a non-voting member. So we'll reach out to Mr. Stevens. I believe he's in the Valley tomorrow. And, and see if we can get somebody on there that, of his designated representative. If anyone has any suggestions for that, they recommend state reps, but it could be anybody. The Speaker can represent, put, put anyone he wants on there.
Okay, item number twenty is to approve modification number one to Bowman Appraisal Services, Inc. for appraisal review services. Western Reserve Greenway Bike Trail Phase Four, Project ID nine-nine-eight-zero-four located in Howland and Weathersfield Townships and Warren and Nile Cities in the amount of $6,150 for the right-of-way services. Modification number one increases the contract amount to $23,330. The state capital budget pass-through funds share for this modification is $6,150. And to allow Denny Malloy, President of the Board, to sign letter form agreement.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, because the change actually was probably four times more than the original scope of work. And it says that it was approved by legal counsel, but we don't have anything related to that. Affirming it, no.
Item number twenty-one is to approve modification number three to the right-of-way services contract with MS Consultants, Inc. In the amount of $11,583. Modification number three is to increase the contract amount from $115,738 to $127,321. Monies will be added to the contract in part two. The state capital budget pass-through fund share for this contract is $11,583. And to allow Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to sign on the behalf of the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Again, because he didn't provide us enough information or even communication to verify that it's approved. No.
Item number twenty-two is to authorize the Board of Commissioners to join with the Trumbull County Prosecuting Attorney to file an application with the Court of Common Pleas for the appointment of Attorney Sam Amendalera as legal counsel for Judge Sandra Stabile Harwood, Judge Sam Bludorn and Magistrate Scott Bombeck in connection with the subpoena issued to them by a litigant in the Trumbull County Court of Common Pleas Domestic Relations Division. Attorney Amendalera was suggested by the judges of the Domestic Relations Division because of his past experience as a magistrate. He will be, he will provide legal counsel and representation at the rate of $250 per hour.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three is to.
I want to make, wait, I don't, no, I know you've changed. Is it, is this the one to approve the grant agreement?
Yes, at Department of Ag.
Make a motion to table the approval of the grant agreement. Because none of the corrections that were recommended by the Prosecutor's Office were included in a cop, in the contract that I was provided. Put it back on next week once the corrections are made.
I made the correction that he asked me to make.
I got a copy of the contract in my file and it was, it didn't include, there's a list of changes. Did anyone review? Am I the only one, Commissioner, who reviewed it?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Oh my God. Item number twenty-three is to approve the grant agreement and the standard affirmation and disclosure form between the State of Ohio, Ohio Department of Agriculture and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to set forth the terms and conditions upon which the Ohio Department of Agriculture will provide funding to the Board of Commissioners to undertake improvements outlined in substitute House Bill six-eight-seven, one, one hundred thirty-fourth General Assembly, Section two-one-five point one-five.
Motion approved.
Motion and modify it subject to the changes recommended by the Prosecutor's Office.
Your modification motion dies for lack of a second.
Make a motion to approve the written agenda item twenty-three.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Only because the recommended changes were not made, um, that, no. They should be made. Please make sure they're made before you have them sign it. Let me review it.
Okay, number twenty-four is a motion to enter an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one-two-one-two-two G four, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations and the collective bargaining strategy for Trumbull County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, are you making that motion then?
I am.
Okay, I'll second it.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Yeah, be right back.
Yeah. I'll sit down.
Back down there, can see this sign?
Okay.
So I'm gonna move your sign over here so that.
Okay, that's.
Make sure everybody in the room can see that sign.
Oh.
I can't. I said about. Approve everything in first six. I can add number seven.
Not number one.
It did not.
Well, she did. Right. Three, four. Five. Six, those were all approved.
United.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. Sorry. Hi, Sarah, how you doing? I spoke to you a couple of days. Right. It's race now. I'm reporting. And you're. Hopefully will be assigned to transportation. I can speak.
Sixteen.
Connect.
Sure will. Then that is my phone sometime.
This very.
Stuff like. Oh, my goodness. Not that I would. I'm just the poor clerk on her and stuff like that.
How are you?
Continue, continue watching me.
Yes, Hannah. You know what? I just listened to him and I just. Okay. But this probably we have a whole thing right now. Where's the. And y'all have every chat and everything. Oh, it's on the phone, it's on the Facebook. I don't do Facebook. Not like, I'm just saying. Okay, so what do you, what they.
I just want to open the agenda today.
Right.
Uh, I do not believe they, they speak about the transportation. Program.
Okay.
Um, I understand yesterday. That is one of the commissioners. Uh, needs to be meeting with the. PA. See. That, that, that may, that may, yeah.
No, I mean, I've been coming. And I'm thinking that he really wanted it. Because it's a need.
Right.
Trumbull County.
It is, right.
Hover. You know, all things, isn't it? This is the moment where it could miss this day. So he misses something.
Max, are you bus racing or, uh, a bus runner?
Yeah, okay, so let me see.
Okay. Uh, we have a, another reporter who's interested in spotting two people who regularly ride the bus.
I don't do it regularly, so, but I'm fighting for the underdogs.
Right.
Need a rock that don't have another. And that's what this should have been about, the everyday people.
Do you, do you mind if I give you my name this long?
I'm with her, but I'm looking up, that's why I'm saying, no, I'm with her.
Right.
I'm saying, we're all saying the same thing. But I was simply saying, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm gonna say it. We're saying the same. She's working very hard. Their kids can be like, they're out in short years. They have to come downtown, right? So why can't, why can't they make buses available? It's not when they. And it's what it really. Yeah, I want to know when you're on the line. I mean, I mean, I don't know. Demand were, were sort of WRT, more than six, I was proud.
Right.
And WRT, I mean, so. What you were saying. And that was, uh, fair resister. You know how they put these little kids that cheer up? They can give everybody's life.
Okay.
But it's all about. They start in a way that we, we get a pass. But these are not. You don't have to. And that's the thing.
Right.
But together, if I had them. I was, you know, they should be coming, just like the school bus situation. They should do the same. Like on each corner, so we don't have to walk. The bus should come at each corner. Everyone, while we're talking about it. It's funny, you put some shams up, because the brothers get ready, they bad.
Yeah.
Those long things. Where we can be covered. They're gonna be covered in the homeless. Their region defines. Don't start caring. And I know what you're saying. But, but the regionification, like, I've go downtown, I said, oh, they doing the second. And, you know, I looked some from restaurants. Let me tell you the truth, man, I got. That's the first one I've done, I never went by your name, so I wasn't out of the restaurant. Yeah, I was twelve percent. And here, I mean, he must. He was like, yeah, and no, he's delicious, but he's the only one. I'm just laughing. But I ain't saying that about. Well, he's. Okay, let me shut up. So. But I consider the machine. We gotta drop. What I must be asking. No, that's what I'm saying. But you're studying. So you think, you think. He'll try to drag stuff. You gotta drive all the way out here to take it off. I don't think they, they like that.
Yeah, but you gotta hear right here. That's a private property.
I know, but it's public. Yeah, I mean, usually.
Right. Right.
On Sundays.
Right.
Okay.
That's what is happening here. Okay, let's give it.
Yeah. You guys want to vote on this maybe?
What's that?
Look, oh. Okay, uh. It's time to make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code. One twenty-one dot twenty-two G four, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations. And the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty-six is to, to approve the conciliation findings issued by Jeffrey A. Balkan. Conciliator, inclusive of all agreements incorporated therein by reference pertaining to the collective bargaining unit agreement. Between the Trumbull County Sheriff and the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Corrections Officers. Effective upon execution through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Yeah, that concludes our regular agenda items, uh, for today. Uh, at this time. Are there any other? Things from the board? First off.
Commissioners, can I just clarify item number nineteen, the vote?
Nineteen.
The transportation improvement district. There was so much confusion, I want to make sure I got the correct vote for that.
I believe we did.
Oh, okay.
I believe we did, but.
Right.
I believe I did too, but it was brought to my attention.
Okay, if, if we hadn't, then I'll vote yes.
Okay, so I had, um, Mr. Cantal Mesa, uh, moved, Mr. Malloy seconded, they both voted yes.
Yes.
And Ms. Frenchco voted no.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
You didn't call the role at all for that one.
Yes, I did. I'm pretty sure I did. That's why I'm, that's why I'm.
Actually, you did vote no, Commissioner, yeah.
That's why I'm clarifying now.
There, one of them was the most, one of them, I'm sorry, one of them was. One of them what, please, I'm talking.
She's trying to hear you.
She's trying to hear you, she just went to.
We're conducting business, so. We have, we had two things on the, one of the things on the agenda was the creation of the TID. You did not call the role for that, but the actual board members was a separate motion. I voted no on the, on, on appointing those members, but you did not call the role for the original motion. So if you could please call the role for the creation of the TID, because that has not been called.
That's what I just called, note nineteen.
Could you please do that, because it wasn't done the first time, please do that, and they don't get to assert what my vote was. So please call it properly.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
For the item.
For item number nineteen.
And please read what it was.
I'm not reading that entire thing again, that's ridiculous.
Just read.
I make a motion to approve agenda item nineteen.
Say at least what it was related to in a meeting, you know that.
It's been said three or four times now, we know what we're.
Exactly, but she didn't call the role for it.
Shut your mouth.
Don't tell me.
Oh, whoa, 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 talk to the.
Don't you tell me.
Do not address, do not address anybody but the chair.
I'm trying.
Mr. Frenchco.
I'm trying.
Do not address anybody.
For the record. You do not, as a clerk, say that it.
You address the chair, you don't look at her and address the employees directly that way. It's ignorant, it's rude, and it's not according to protocol.
Sit up here and insult your board, you work for the board.
It's on every woman in the room.
Please call the role properly related to that item because you didn't call it the first time. Please read at least the first paragraph and call the role because it is not a valid vote unless it is described. You can't just say motion to approve number.
I, I just want to know how you, how you know this and why you're acting as our legal counsel. You're saying what we have to do here, are you an attorney? You, you're just saying things and making them up. You don't know that.
Um, why did you, why is it that you read the entire motion for executive session because it was brought to you?
Commissioner, a commissioner can approve an agenda item, say, I approve agenda item nineteen, I make a motion to approve agenda item nineteen, and it can be seconded, period. Stop with trying to bully people for no reason.
This is a very serious matter, please call the role for, please actually read the. First paragraph as the President of the Board instructed you to before Commissioner Cantal Mesa interrupted.
Item number nineteen, in the matter of creating the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District. And determining the structure for and appointing members to the Board of Trustees of the Trumbull County Transportation Improvement District.
Make a motion to approve.
I'm seconding that motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Hey, now back to other business. Um, we have two things pending. And that we need to address here as a board. First is transportation. Uh, we had stated up here that we will have an advisory board to meet with. Interested parties that need transportation to and from work. To and from doctor's appointments, people that are left out of the system that we already have. Um, so those would be people under sixty or not disabled. Uh, or not through a job and family services program. And I recommend that we have an advisory board. Uh, I would like to. Plan further with that and, and ask my. Fellow commissioners. Can we get together and have a special meeting regarding this? Or do we want to appoint one board member to attend a meeting and, and, and have a, a meeting? With the interested shareholders and our transportation director, or what route, uh, my. My, um, colleagues would like to go.
Well, I, I know, first of all, there's a meeting that's going to be scheduled October fourth, tentatively October fourth with ODOT and East Gate. Uh, and WRTA and the Board of Commissioners, so.
Lot for that, I think.
That, that would probably, if that meeting bears fruit, then we can, um, act on something like that. I mean, there, if there's different funding possibilities out there, uh, if that's, obviously, if that's going to be a, um. You know, something that is.
Is it a public meeting?
It would be a public meeting and it relates to funding of, it would be a waste of people's time to bring them in if we don't know what's. What opportunities exist, so that's, I believe, what Commissioner Cantal Mesa is trying to say. Is it because we have an opportunity to have a meeting with Merida, with, with East Gate, with, um.
ODOT.
ODOT, yeah, that we should wait until after that before we, if. You, the board decides to.
I actually agree, I agree with that.
When is that meeting, Commissioner?
Tentatively, it's October fourth.
I know that we have a, we have a commissioners meeting that same day.
Yes, in the afternoon, I believe it, the email said specifically between one and three was ODOT's availability. And we need to make sure that the commissioners are available at that time.
Okay, so all three commissioners, we should all attend that? It'll be announced as a public.
I'm gonna leave that up to ODOT and, um, East Gate and how they want to deal with it, if they want to initially just one commissioner. Um, then, um, you know, we can, we can determine.
I think it needs to be public, just in case, because I definitely intend to go. Unless, if someone else wants to go, then.
I think we, we should all go.
Okay.
I think all three of us should go, it should be a public meeting. And, uh, okay, we'll do that and then. Address the future thing afterward.
Be what?
Well, I'll have to correspond with a, with the coordinator to see for first that it is public.
No, you have to make a, you have to actually schedule the meeting at a regular meeting, so you would have to actually make a motion to have. The specific meeting at a specific time, at a specific location, and that has to be journalized.
But we don't know if everybody's available yet on that date, that's the thing, it's tentative right now. But we will notify the press when, if and when that meeting happens.
We also have to have it on our agenda too, so it has to be journalized, so let's just do that then, and then if it's canceled, it's canceled.
Then make a motion.
Uh. Motion to. Have the meeting related to. Funding for transportation at the Commissioners Hearing Room on October fourth. From one to three P M.
I'll second it, I mean, obviously, subject to change, but I'll, I'll second it.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
And, and here, here's my point on this, I just, I don't want. You know, keep on this, but a, at the same time, i- if, if the initial meeting needs to be just ODOT and WRTA. And, and they request a member, just one member of the board be there, I think it's. Uh, what I'm saying is I don't want to not have the meeting because we, we want to make it a public meeting and they don't want to have a public meeting just yet. You know, so let, let's keep that in mind as a board, so, uh, there's not, there's not going to be anything that's going to be. Uh, I mean, we're, we're dealing with other agencies and other, um, public agencies, so it's not. There's nothing nefarious going on, it's just a matter of communicating, and if they want to do that initially with just one commissioner. Uh, I, I don't think we should say, no, we're not having a meeting unless all three of us are there, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, secondly, we have all of our grant applications in for ARPA funds. We discussed at past meetings after the fifteenth. We would collectively get together to decide the route we're going to go to dispense the rest of the remaining funds that we have. Uh, as we learned yesterday, there's kind of three classifications. Those that are already with the attorney that she is reviewing when we held, when we did pause. Ones we have not talked about and ones we have talked about so far. Um, and we need to figure out with, we have roughly twenty million dollars in requests. And ten million dollars in available funds, so we are going to have to. Clearly go through the applications, delineate, uh, what route we want to go. What. Projects we want to fund and the amounts that we're going to fund to stretch the money as far as we can possibly go to. Spread the money around to as many places as possible, they're all worthy causes, I'm sure. Um, but some of them may not fit within the ARPA classifications and guidelines, some of them do, some might be too big of an ask. Um, yeah, that's for us to determine, uh, with that, so moving forward with that. Again, I'll ask my colleagues, how would you like to move forward, uh, and address the remaining ARPA funds?
I think the best way to do it would be to have. A work session. As opposed to a public meeting where everyone's. as opposed to a public meeting where everyone's coming in and a, a free for all like you normally conduct. I would like, I'd volunteer to chair it and actually go through it and get the, go through the remaining application so that we are making decisions together rather than just talking for three hours. And I would also like to see if our legal counsel, Tanya, could be there as well.
Okay, when would that be?
And how, how would we do that with the three of us in a work session without the public involved?
Well, the public could be there to listen and, uh, at the end, if we, if, at, at any point, if we, if we have questions about, I mean, every one of us has received all of the applications. I'm sure every one of us has been reached out to and talked to. Most of the applications have had people come up and, uh, you know, we've had two meetings already where the public speaks to us about their projects. They come to your workshops. They come to the meetings. We are aware of what the project requests are. If we need any additional clarifications on them, sure, we can ask them, but we need to actually make some decisions. We can't just keep on, um, discussing for the next few months.
Okay, do you have a date you want to do this? I don't want to put this off another week. We had people waiting for two years for some of these projects.
I mean, and it might, and it might be wise once we start that is to go through the ones that we're eliminating first. You know, to, to work ourselves down to where we need to be. We just need to actually make decisions instead of kicking at the can. So, um, well, we have the transportation meeting tentatively scheduled for next week.
The fifth is that annexation.
The fifth is the annexation.
I, I, I'm in favor. First of all, I'm in favor of, if we're going to pare it down. I think the ones that we've already asked legal counsel to approve, um, that we're in agreement on, let's put them on and let's move forward.
We, we haven't been in, I mean, the two of you might have been, you guys were just sending everything to legal counsel to find out if it was eligible. I think that we need to take a total look at everything that's remaining and make those final decisions instead of just saying, hey, this one's approved, so it's going.
Well, I, I disagree with you respectfully, but, um, I, I didn't send any to legal counsel that I think that weren't going to be funded.
Well, we have to look at what's left. Uh, we're at that point, uh, in my opinion. I don't know with, how he feels, but.
Why don't we do it Tuesday after my, our work session and your meeting with department heads Tuesday afternoon?
It's fine.
Does that work for your schedule, Commissioner Frenchco?
A land bank or solid waste?
We do know, we have an enterprise zone agreement, public hearing on Wednesday at ten A M. And then we have, um, this transportation thing in the afternoon. We have the annexation on Thursday. Tuesday, the only thing I have on the schedule is the workshop. The Tuesday afternoon would work good for me.
That's fine.
Is there planning commission that day too, or no?
No.
Tuesday. About two hours. Uh, two to four.
Two to four would be fine with me. One to three either or.
Okay.
Fine.
What time?
Two to four.
Okay, we'll have a ARPA meeting next Tuesday, Ray, from two to four in this meeting. Or this.
I'll put that on the agenda, or I'm sorry, I make a motion from the floor to have the, uh, ARPA workshop to evaluate the applications and come to decisions. We'll have to invite, uh, uh, Tanya. And we'll have it in our hearing room from two to four.
Okay, and I would say we go on with the meeting.
The Octo- October.
Third.
Third, okay.
And I would say we have the meeting with or without Tanya's availability. If she can't make it, we still.
Even be able to call in.
Okay.
Okay, is that a motion then, or is that just a?
Okay, second.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Okay, progress. Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Please remember to state your name and where you're from as you approach the microphone.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. I noticed again today when I came in here that Ms. Frenchco was parked right outside here in the handicap spot yet again. Over the weekend, Ms. Frenchco was down in Youngstown at the festival dancing. There's two videos of it online. When somebody confronted her on her post about how she could be dancing in Youngstown, yet taking up handicap spaces here at work, her reply was her moves are basically walking and counting. I repeat, walking and counting. Now, these handicap spots out here on the road are designed for people who are visiting this building, not people who work here. If her moves are basically walking and counting, then shouldn't she be able to park in her assigned spot and dance her way in here? I also noticed that I'm, I'm a large man. Danny, you're a large man. I noticed the man she was dancing with was also a large man. I'm curious, did you fat shame him the way you fat shame Commissioner Malloy every week? And I'm also upset at the fact that last, I believe it was last week after the meeting was over, the two commissioners, Cantel Molesta and Malloy, found upon themselves to go out into the, into the audience here and talk with people while Ms. Frenchco sat up there and mocked them, made fun of them, criticized Danny for what he was wearing. This is the commissioner we have here, Ms. Frenchco. God, do we really need four more years of her not coming to work and, and her shenanigans here? God, this is insane. It really is. Thank you.
Anybody else have something for the good of Trumbull County?
Hello, Commissioner, um, Malloy, Commissioner Frenchco and Commissioner Camatosa. Sorry.
I have to search your name.
I've, I've had worse.
My name is Tara. I'm a citizen of Trumbull County. Thank you for permitting me to speak. I have come here to secure the WRTA bus servers for the good of Trumbull County and its residents. I think that everyone has heard the saying, it takes a village to raise a child. Therefore, I am not alone to secure WRTA bus service. There's Mr. Charlie, Julie Stout, Debbie Barosi and Ms. Sherry. They cannot be here today, so I'm present. We have three demands. The first is to restore WRTA worn fixed route service, route service. Second, is expand WRTA service in Trumbull County. Third, establish fair, free service. Thank you. So I have to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anything for the good of Trumbull County? Okay, phone lines. Let's go to the phone lines. If anybody has anything for the greater good of Trumbull County, please hit star six and unmute yourself and we'll give you the opportunity to speak. Star six to unmute yourself and announce your name.
This is Mariano Longo calling in.
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Uh, good morning, commissioners. Uh, I tuned in, uh, after, uh, item agenda fifteen or sixteen, so I'm not sure that I heard everything. But my understanding is that you are meeting on the ARP grant applications already in the portal this coming Tuesday. Is that correct?
Tuesday from two to four, we'll be discussing all ARPA business, including those that are in the portal. Or I should say in, in the, with the lawyer.
And is that, uh, is that meeting public or a closed session?
It's public. That's why we made the motion. Anytime there are two or more of us, then we have to make it a public meeting, which is why we scheduled it here today.
Okay, uh, thank you for answering the question and thank you for, uh, addressing these, uh, our grant applications. Finally, uh, I know it's been sort of, uh, postponed and kicked down, uh, the curb. I just have to say that in the post pandemic grant application process, I have to speak for all the little guys in the small businesses. Uh, I have to say this publicly that the corporations were the first to get their money. The banks were the first to get, uh, money, uh, post pandemic. Uh, then the, then the entities with legal counsel got their money. But the little guys and the small businesses who actually were physically and financially impacted by the pandemic are the last in line. And at the end of postponements and delays, uh, so thank you for finally addressing this. Uh, it's, it's not one day too soon. So thank you. Uh, I hope that we can uh, at least get some action and close, closure on Tuesday's meeting.
Thank you.
I do want to respond to that and say that one of the first things that Commissioner Cantal Mesa and I voted on when that funds, funding was made available was making sure that small business grants were taken care of. That was the first, I know we had dispute over whether or not it was going to be loans or grants and the amounts, but that was one of the first things that we did because I recognize it the same way he does.
Very proud of the board for that. Absolutely.
And, uh, again, I'm just thanking you for, uh, uh, allotting us, uh, a unique time to deal with that, uh, this coming Tuesday. So thank you and, uh, uh, let's see, uh, if we can come up with some positive results. Best to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next caller, if anyone else is there, you can hit star six.
Carl Clemmons here.
Yes, sir.
Carl Clemmons, Holland, Holland, uh, Township. Uh, former transportation board member and a, a user of the system. Um, as I've been listening to these meetings for forever and we have been kicking the can down the road, uh, for as long as I've been using the system. One thing I would advise everybody, all the listeners, all the writers, all the concerned people, right now, there is a lot of misinformation going out there and a lot of people that are underinformed or misinformed. What we need to do to make this thing work as a county, figure out what we want, work together. Nobody's going to get everything that they want, but come up with a program, whether it be contracting with WRTA. I think we need public transportation. And everybody asked me as a disabled senior why I'm concerned. That'd be pretty selfish of me not to be concerned with the rest of my public. And I would advise everybody on the board. I've, I've asked people before to put their keys down for one week and see how difficult it is to get around, whether you're disabled, a senior or the public. And don't use your family. I've never had anybody take me up on that because, uh, their schedules are all too busy.
I actually have.
Well, if you have, then, then good for you and you understand what is needed. And right now, I, I would just advise everybody to just think, have a little bit of compassion and just think, what if you had to have a system? Would you be happy with it right now? And so I'm going to ask for, and just please, everyone, do your homework, do your research, learn a little bit more about it, write it a little bit. And come on, guys, let's get this thing, we want to coalesce and connect each other. Um, connect people, connect places, connect counties. We can do this if, if we put our, uh, become a little more selfless and, and be a little bit more compassionate. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I should say, I, I know that when I was younger, I, I had to walk to work. So I don't know if any other board member has experienced what that's like to have to walk to work, but it's not, it's not fun in the hot or in the snow. I've had to do that. And then I, when I broke my back, I was reliant on, uh, public transportation as well because I wasn't able to drive and I didn't have family members to take me. So it is something that is important and, and I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Carl, so.
Okay, any other callers? Star six on your phone to unmute yourself?
Um, I do want to make a, a, a comment. I, I noticed that we have um, people, our department heads coming two days a week to meetings where they don't even often have things on the agenda. That equals probably, I mean, a workday is only six and a half hours in Trumbull County if you include the hour break and the two, the hour lunch and the two fifteen minute breaks. So when we've got department heads coming over here to the commissioner's office, they're, they're losing an entire workday. And I don't think that we need to, um, have, I don't think we need to have the employees or department heads here for, you know, four to six hours a week, especially when they don't have things on the agenda. And, uh, I'm still wondering about what's going on with I T if they're managing the meetings. Because every time there's a meeting, we have an, an employee in our office that just is sitting there and talking to the other people in her office who are taking over her space in order to, you know, assist with the Zoom.
We have an I T person in training that is in there training as we speak.
And then that's going, okay. But nonetheless, we've got employees that like Gary who comes and I, I'm sure he has work that he could be doing.
But yet you, you, you complain about department heads attending our meetings, but we have our public meeting on Tuesday. And then you complained that we weren't making them stay to go to your meeting after our meeting and stay longer to attend a second meeting on county time. But that's okay for them to stay and then meet with you at eleven after they meet with us at ten. But you don't want them here learning about the public's information, how they can serve the public better or being a part of the process. Uh, that doesn't make any sense.
I don't.
If it's okay for you for us to have two meetings and, and you can make them come to that, if you could.
That's not what I'm talking about. I, I mean, it takes a few minutes. I don't require everyone to sit and stay put for three, two to three hours, one, two, whatever.
There have been people in your office for an hour and a half after the meeting, after they were in our meeting.
I, I'm just saying that I think it's an inefficient use of taxpayer time to have people here for, you know, what equates to an entire workday. But the board.
An entire workday?
At times, yeah.
Six and a half hours here.
Sometimes. I mean, you've had three hour meetings and.
That's a whole workday? Mr. Newborough?
Yeah, uh, Gary Newborough, Trumbull County sanitary engineer. Uh, Commissioner, when I don't have things on the agenda, my primary uh, motivation for being here during the workshops and meetings is we still get questions from the public and on the phone. Uh, there have been times when we haven't had agenda items on the, the sanitary engineers didn't have any agenda items. And I didn't come down and it just seems to be those are the times somebody's going to call in on that phone and want to know, uh, one answers to water sewer questions. So that's why, so that's why I'm here.
Well, you can call, you can call in as well and just be on the line in case so that you're still, you know, efficiently using your time. Uh, that's what I would suggest, but okay. Rather sit for hours.
Well, I, I just have to say for the record, I highly disagree. I love seeing the department heads in here, interacting with the public, being available, being a part of the process, being a part of the solution. Uh, these guys work hard all week long and this is the ti- time when we go and get progress done. When we make votes that affect them, their departments and the daily lives of all the citizens. And, and we should be proud that our department heads are engaged in the process and aren't hiding from their bosses. Yeah, was there somebody?
There's Mike Salma, Trumbull County Transit Administrator. I was listening to the meeting and I didn't realize that you were going to be voting on something for a meeting that's coming up. Um, this morning I found out on the fourth that, um, there's nobody from East Gate that can make that meeting. So, and, and I tried to star six myself and I couldn't get in. So that's why I walked over here. So my recommendation would be to move it, the other day would be the eighteenth, which I believe is. So my recommendation would be to move it, the other day would be the eighteenth, which I believe is a Wednesday.
Did you find, see, we need to find out if ODOT and Eastgate.
ODOT can make, no, I've got everybody else. Eastgate, I got a phone call from me, from a staff member from Eastgate. There's three possibilities of a staff, one staff member coming. None of them can make that day on the fourth.
Okay.
Should we continue on with the meeting anyway? So we can at least start the process. You want to delay it a couple more weeks?
Well, that's a murder. Well, I already know murder won't be there on that day. Murder will not be there on the eighteenth either.
So which is the day that you?
It would be the eighteenth and maybe somebody else from the staff could be there like Jim Kent.
That probably wouldn't be as good, yeah.
Again, that's.
Can you find out when she's available?
She's, I already did. That's what I found out. She's gonna, she will not be available for.
Probably when she's not available. Again, can you find out when she is available?
But the other people are not.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to say. The dates that we have.
Let's wait until we have cer- a a solid date and and move from.
That's why I wanted to come and say this.
Thank you.
The other thing I I was already planning on, this is not going to be a public meeting. This will be a Zoom meeting and it's going to be here in this office. I've already sent my information, uh public records request to the IT department to do a Zoom meeting. Now, the question I don't know, because it's a question for the lawyers. If we do a Zoom meeting and only one of you show, only one of you come, can the other two commissioners watch it after the fact? I don't know the answer and I'm going to be asking that of the lawyers. But this will be a um closed meeting. It's not going to be a public meeting because I've already got that back also from.
I I don't think that's very good process there. We, I think we need to include the stakeholders. We need to include people like Tara and the people that ride the bus to get their input. Um I understand there's one thing we can do, they want to do in private, come up with a plan before they get to the public, but here we are now. We're talking two more weeks now and kicking the can down the road again, two more weeks.
We could do the fourth. I'm not saying we can't do the fourth. It's just that it won't be anybody from Eastgate there. And when I talked to the staff member, they said they really don't have to be there because Eastgate would be something down the road because Eastgate is the planning part of this.
Well, that's why we need them there, right? I mean.
Well, no, they're they're.
We haven't even established, maybe there's other alternatives, maybe there's other ideas from the public, maybe there's other ideas from the stakeholders.
If you want to have it open.
They can bring those up at any meeting, Denny, like.
Okay, so do you want to wait another month then?
Anyone at any time.
You want to wait till November? When murder's available? Is that what you want to do? He just gave two dates. You said no.
Anytime people can come in and make recommendations from the public or from the community, this is something different. So I understand that you're excited about having public input. They can do that at any time. They do it at every meeting. They have been. And so can any any other stakeholders. They can let us know. They can send an email. But what we're talking about is a meeting that requires professionals in transportation. So I I would like to see a meeting with Eastgate and and ODOT.
That's what I was going to do. I was going to make, to see if anybody's going to be available on the eighteenth.
That's fine.
I'll make myself available.
Be there.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And that's the day that everyone can be there, correct?
Except for murder.
Well, murder definitely can't be there.
But but Kinnick can be there, somebody from Eastgate can be there.
That's what I'm hoping. I'm gonna, I will contact.
Why don't we get all that situated before we make another meeting here? Come to us and then we'll we'll announce it to the public.
Put it on the agenda once you have it verified to have us, but.
Right, and that will give, that will also give IT time to to set up the um Zoom meeting also because I would like, I still want this as a Zoom meeting and recorded.
Was the public involved in this or not then? On the eighteenth?
Like I've I've been informed that they really don't want the public involved on the eighteenth.
This is about potential funding opportunities, if I understand this correctly, or different ways that we can incorporate WRTA without joining WRTA.
Then these are two separate meetings then. Having a transportation meeting about what's best is different than the funding for WRTA.
Well, because that that's the other thing.
Right. Dean is going to be there as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, Dean Harris definitely be there. And you're right. This is what this meeting is going to be about is funding. Can we receive any funding from whoever?
See, it would, it would, it would result in a public record if it's being recorded. So anyone who would want to know what happened would be able to request that.
Well, that's why.
That's why he's doing this this way.
That's why I want to record it and that way anybody can watch it.
Public stability to review what happened.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that, but I want to, obviously I want to be there.
Well, it just be one of you, but that's up to.
I'd like to be there too to learn on this stuff. So this is, this isn't working out very well.
I mean, if we do a public, we could do a public meeting.
It's got to be a public meeting. It's got to be public. They want to educate us to get all three of our votes. They got to educate us in a public format. We're not going to go and do any backroom deals with transportation.
Okay.
It's not going to happen.
Well, it's going to be a public meeting for this at this point and we're going to be going for the eighteenth somewhere around one or one thirty is what I'm thinking.
That's not a good idea. I mean, if 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 you're you're doing what he's telling you.
No.
Without talking to the, you could see both of us not shaking our heads like out of concern, right? We, there's, if if the state does not want this to be public, we do not need to make it public. We can have that where it it's informational. I believe that the other commissioners are able to learn or hear or have feedback. But as far as discussing um solutions or
Yeah.
the use of the funding, there could only be one person who's discussing, but if the other ones there, it could be perceived or construed as contributing to making a a decision.
And actually, this meeting, you're not going to be discussing the use of the funding. We're just to find out, can we get funding?
We.
That's my, that's going to be my question too. ODOT, can we get funding and if so, what is the funding and?
So so if the meeting can be with all three commissioners or quorum, even two commissioners, whatever it may be. Maybe we can ask Bill Danzo if we're not going to speak during the meeting because we've done this before. Because we've done this before where if we're not speaking and we're not giving our opinion, then then we can sit in on the meeting and listen.
And listen to it.
And listen, and it won't be a sunshine law violation. I'm I'm happy to ask Bill Danzo that question and maybe that. And you could speak for the board. You know, we're not giving any input. We're not giving our opinion.
I will, I will end up talking. Th- this is a a an a field, an area that I'm gonna not be able to sit quietly.
Well, maybe, maybe for this initial meeting.
But I could just.
For one, you know what I mean?
I mean, so, because somebody asked me, am I putting an agenda together? Not really, because I only have one question, maybe two.
What are your questions?
My basic question is, can we get funding from the state or federal level?
For what?
For transportation, for public transportation.
And you've been our our transportation administrator.
Yeah, but can we get funded because we're not a designated anymore? We're, there's a lot of reasons, okay?
No, we can't because we're not a designated.
Right. So can.
But can we get pass through funding from that?
We gets, is there anywhere we can get funding from? Pass through the um general revenue fund that they have up there? There's other funds up at ODOT has and the state has.
Now, and and all this time you haven't. You haven't found that out?
What's that?
You haven't found that out?
That's what I'm trying to find out right now. I want to get this before. I wanted a solid answer. Yes, no. Then if the answer is no, we're going to have to go in a different direction. If the answer is yes, then we go after that funding. That's what you want to do.
What's the funding that you're talking about specifically?
Like, because it's a pass.
Pass through funds.
From where?
From the state.
From the state.
Which.
Through WRTA to other entities, the WRT subcontractors.
They also have general fund. They have, the the state has a general fund up there that I know of.
Yeah, they're not.
I, again, if you don't ask, you're not going to know.
Uh, okay.
That's all, that's all I'm saying. I don't want someone to come back to me and said, did you ever ask that question? So if you don't ask, you're not going to know. So if the answer is no, we know this and then we know here's the way we have to.
Yeah, Director Marchbanks wouldn't put anything in for Trumbull County and to even the the state budget because we are supposed to be doing this on our own. So I I already.
See, here's what I've been told.
There's, there's no way in the world the state is mandating that we join only WRTA to get funds. They're not holding us for ransom that way. There's no way they can do that.
I don't think you understand.
I've been told by the FTA, this is a local decision. Local decision, when they're saying that includes ODOT.
Mm-hmm. Yes, but they're not going, they're not going to deviate from their policy and how they disseminate, disperse funds in order to help a community that hasn't been helping itself. I just happen to know that. But if you want to ask, I I would suggest also sending that as an email and see seeing the commissioner so we can have a response.
Sending what as an email?
A request. Is there any, like, you you do really? Okay, I get having a meeting, but at the same time, that could be sent as a question via email where you can get the response in advance of any type of meeting.
Just send it as a question.
Okay.
And that's when the meeting came up, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, so we are back to square one. Meeting, no meeting, October fourth, non-October fourth.
So, yeah, I guess I'll just, we'll cancel that motion to rescind that meeting. Will you second that, please?
Second.
Okay. Frenchco, yes.
Mr. Cantilamisa?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
From Malloy?
No. I think we should still have our own meeting with the advisory people that we had and have have bringing people together in anticipation of the next meeting to hear what other ideas are out there. I want to give the public a chance to talk to us and present their ideas.
It's, that's not what the meeting was for. It was, it was rescinding a meeting that was only to include certain people already. So then on top of that, it, I think it's incon- inconsiderate of the people in the community to ask them for their input when they think that what they're saying could occur. And we know better. You know, I think it's, it's, it's just.
If you know better, why don't you have a solution already then?
Seriously.
Seriously.
Yeah, I mean, you were, you were sitting up here talking about using Ubers and other things that are completely not allowable with money because there's certain requirements that I hope he's aware of. Yeah. And I, and I, and I overheard Murda explaining to you after that meeting where you were blubbiating that those things are not allowable, so. Yeah. Correct, but, but if you're using any state money that's coming down from the FTA, you have those guidelines associated with it. If it's federal money, there are guidelines that are very strict. I mean, you'd have to have drug and alcohol and the procurement is so different. How would you ever do that, you know? He under, I I I think he understands that.
Well, maybe we can get someone like Tara ride to work without using the federal money then. At a less of a cost to the taxpayers than adding a sales tax or these other crazy options.
And Mike, that's what we want you to identify as well, is these people that need rides to work that are not falling into our system, that that are falling through the cracks of our system. We want to address them. We want to address that.
Seven, there's only seven, okay.
Well, I understand that uh Valerick has been added to the list and it was, never was because I went to put an application in at Valerick and I got dropped off, but I had to walk the rest of the way. Now, the bus goes straight to the front door of Valerick. How did that happen? And they got rid of uh Altium Cell.
Those are determined by WRTA's board. Those are determined by WRTA's board, those routes.
The Warren Express? It's um, the only route that comes into Trumbull County is the Warren Express.
Yes, I I I'm sorry, then I thought that uh that was part of um WRTA because it's a WRTA bus that goes there.
That is separate. That happened before the routes that were, the fixed routes were added and it will happen after. That is something.
It's not changing.
Funded, that's not going to be changed. And that is done through WRTA and their existing board and with the input of the, of Mahoning County only.
So we do have some busing available.
It's the Warren Express. It's the only one. Right. So they're, they're the ones who are making those decisions, the the board for WRTA, which does not include Trumbull County, but they still, I mean, I know there's been some discussion over whether or not we joined that Trumbull County wouldn't have the same input and they would kind of screw us over, but as we see, they're still doing the Warren Express and doing what they can when they have funding available to help Trumbull County, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fr- Frenchco.
Is there any, anything else, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Go ahead.
I believe a few weeks.
Say your name and where you're from again, just.
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. A few weeks ago, I think you stated that you guys were what, seeking a an architect or something to?
Surveyor.
Surveyor. To what, figure out like a plan for a building?
Yes.
Okay, where where are we at with that? And is there any chance that we can use the new Mahoning County pound as an example? I've seen a video of that pound down there.
It's, it's uh state of the art, yeah, and they spent a lot of money on it. And we're gonna, we're gonna take a little bit from everybody. I mean, I think um uh a lot of the nonprofits out there, the Mahoning County uh pound is is um the, those are all models for us to look at for sure. Uh but the first step in this is is looking at the land. Uh we've retained it, believe it or not, if anybody, surveyors are very hard to come by in Trumbull County. It's very up and coming profession for anybody that wants to get into it because we can't even retain people. But it's going to be the middle of October before we get a surveyor in there. Just because we couldn't find anybody and uh that they're, they're going to um look at that land and uh on the, on the southern end of the property. Uh which is okay with Viana Township, meets all the zoning regulations, all that. Um and and we'll be right next to AWL, so. I I think that uh Healthy Hearts and Paws is putting up a building too that uh I'd like to tour uh that that is, um he does phenomenal work, by the way.
The decision made to retain a surveyor.
It was discussed at a public meeting.
You, you, we still have, I just encourage the board to follow sunshine and proper procurement. I mean, seriously, I'm not saying that it's not a good thing that is being done, but at the same time, we need to make sure that these things are journalized because no one could be paid for that unless there is a journal action and we have proper procurement procedures too. And you're talking about hiring someone to do something that has never been discussed or.
Well, it's been discussed.
Journalized at our, at our meeting, so. So.
Yeah, so so that that's in the works and uh the journal uh item will be forthcoming, correct, correct. The journal item will be forthcoming, but but good news, that is in the, in the works and in in motion. After that, the architecture, the architect and design uh group will be selected and then we can kind of spec it out too. So uh we're going to look at all those different models when we do that, especially the Healthy Hearts and Paws model that's going in uh on the west side of Warren. I think that's um, you know, a little bit more cost effective and a little bit more doable. Uh but also dignified and uh could be a flagship building for Trumbull County as well, so, thank you.
Does anybody have anything else? Last call.
Can you hear me?
Hold on, sir, on the phone.
Just to come up to the podium.
Yes, but.
We need, we need your name and we need your name, where you're from, ma'am, officially. I'm sorry, we got to keep it.
For the record.
By the record.
What they're doing is they're not taking actual meeting minutes, so they're only using the audio. And because of that, they're, they're requiring people, but it it doesn't meet the revised code guidelines anyway just because of, I don't know. They'll have to fix it pretty soon.
Fast gentleman, we're talking about October fourth.
Yes. What's your name for the?
My name is Sherry, uh taxpayer.
Thank you.
Trumbull County. Um, no, I'm not trying to be funny, um but I'm just saying for clarification, point of clarification. We were talking about October fourth in the beginning.
Yes.
And I think the gentleman stated that Eastgate was not going to be able to come. But can't we use teleconference conferencing like we do for, you know, just in case you're not there, but they could be there?
She's not available.
At period?
Period, yeah.
Okay.
Because it is a Zoom call.
I just want a clarification because it was just too much going on, so we really didn't have a set date.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Someone else was on the phone.
Someone on the phone.
Yeah, this is Ken Youngkins. I live up in Berg Hill.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I uh, I guess the question is more towards Commissioner Frenchco. And it's about your workshop meetings. I've been listening to your meetings and thank you for putting them online where I can listen to them Bluetooth while I'm driving the truck. And I've listened all your meetings, all the way, all the way back to uh Denny when you got in that seat. And my favorite one is the workshop meeting. I love the cross talk. I love the direction and the vision of Trumbull County from the nine one one. I love the crosstalk. I love the direction and the vision of Trumbull County from the nine-one-one and the Courtland Bank that you guys are purchasing. And maybe.
Incorrect.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The, the Board of, Board of Health is purchasing, and actually today.
But anyways, what I'm getting at, um, everybody has an opinion, but I keep hearing that the sunshine laws are being broken for the workshop meetings. I went to Attorney General and read the sunshine law. Educate me. What's being broken and why, Nikki, you don't go to a workshop meeting? Because me, as a resident in Trumbull County, I see a lot of wasted motion and a wasted time of reanswering everything that was discussed at the workshop meeting. Is there litigation? What's on hold? Why can't we get a decision that these workshop meetings are not violating the sunshine law?
I feel we are in compliance with the sunshine law. We've been advised by outside attorneys, actually attorneys that work for the Attorney General's Office that do the sunshine law training online for all new, um, elected officials. That's our attorney that advised us on how to do it. I believe a hundred percent we're, we are, um, legal.
He did not.
He did not what?
He did not advise you to only take minutes via video for the regular meeting.
Commissioner, he is, he is our attorney, not your attorney. He was retained by Commissioner Cantle Mesa and myself to defend us against you. And he's the guy that wrote the sunshine laws and did the training online. You can go see him right now on the, on the website. That's our attorney, and he says we are legal. He's the one that wrote the protocol for it. You could disagree all you want.
Pending litigation, let's not.
That would be, uh, that would, that would be great. Bu- by the way, he does represent the Board of Commissioners as well as it relates to all manner, matters related to sunshine. So he represents you in the, your, uh, litigation, but he represents the Board of Commissioners, including me, as it relates to advice.
Even though you're suing the other two board members.
I have tried to get you to do it right, and if you didn't want to, it's been years. You didn't, you've been a commissioner for eight years and didn't take sunshine.
Again, this is pending litigation, pending litigation.
Say this, well, you've been a commissioner for eight years, and you didn't take sunshine law training until the litigation started. That's.
Not true.
You were deposed, and that's what you said.
Not true.
Were you lying in your depositions?
Please, let's move on. This is ridiculous.
Oh, okay, well.
Cowardish and ridiculous. This is doing nothing for Trumbull County.
Depositions.
Nothing.
Well, the litigation.
You're suing your employer, that's what this comes to.
All right.
And we have to deal with it. Trumbull County has to deal with it by county resources.
Do a request of Commissioner Cantle Mesa's sunshine law training since we've been elected, because it doesn't exist until, uh, a couple months ago, or a month or so ago.
And called worse. Is there anything else, Mr. Chairman?
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.